Hello everyone. How's everybody doing tonight? Welcome to Castle Bay Elementary School. I'd like to thank Castle Bay, especially David Garringer over there in the green, for allowing us to use this venue. I wanted to thank the Porter Ranch Neighborhood Council for their support of this event and help putting this together. And I want to thank the candidates for participating in the debate. We're all very excited to have you here, so thank you. And I'd also like to thank the League of Women Voters for all their support and help in putting this event together and moderating this event. So we're very lucky to have our moderator here today. His name is David Holtzman. David is a public health professional who moved to Los Angeles from Oakland to study public interest law and policy at UCLA, and he's lived in the LA area ever since. His professional career includes service as a state scientist, work as an environmental consultant specializing in air quality, a term on the hearing board at the South Coast Air Quality Management District, and legal work for State Parks Management Agency. He served as condo association president, public safety chair of Neighborhood Council, and president of the League of Women Voters of Los Angeles. So Mr. Holtzman is well acquainted with the city of Los Angeles, and we're very thankful for him to be here to moderate this forum. So, thank you. Thanks for that introduction. Can people hear me? Is my mic on? Yeah? It's on, good. I can't hear the feedback. That's fine. Thank you all for being here, and thank you to the Porter Ranch Neighborhood Council, Jason Hector, Fran Lepides, and all the other volunteers who helped make tonight possible. As you can see, the League of Women Voters from LEP has male members, although it did begin as a way to help women exercise their long-denied right to vote when they got suffrage. The League is a nonpartisan organization that encourages informed participation in government, study issues sometimes, we take positions, but we never support or oppose particular candidates. We'll talk into the mic. Don't move the mic, talk into the mic, that's good. Move the mic, it picks up the speaker and then you get feedback, okay. All right, so there are a lot of candidates here, so I ask you all to keep very quiet, turn off your cellphones if you think you're gonna get a call. In fact, I better do that with mine. Go ahead now. And please don't applaud or boo anything until the end of the forum. That's so we don't waste too much time. With regards to the candidates, one thing I don't want to have at this particular forum is attacks on other candidates' characters. You can bring up specific things that people have done, facts, but please keep your opinions of your opponent's characters to yourself. Candidates will have equal time to answer questions. League timekeepers are here with paddles. Rosemary, would you like to hold the paddles up so we can see what they look at? Candidates, look for those paddles. They'll let me know when to cut the candidates off, and I will cut the candidates off if they go past time. Because there are so many candidates, not everybody will be asked the same questions. So to help make up for that, you'll have at least one opportunity to answer a question of your choice that was posed to other candidates. And if time permits, we'll have questions from the audience, rounded questions from the audience, and we have ushers here who will be providing note cards. Raise your hand, and she'll bring one to you. I think there were pens in the back, I noticed when I came in. And then, before we conclude, the candidates will have 45 seconds each for closing statements, and I hope as part of that, they will address their unique strengths as a candidate for City Council. All right, did I get that right? No, no, actually, we changed it back to 60 seconds for closing statements, sorry. Changed the spreadsheet after I wrote the intro. All right, and then after we conclude, we should have the room for another 30 minutes or so for you to chat with your neighbors and perhaps some of the candidates. All right, let's get started. We have four groups of four here. So Group A is the first four candidates. They are Jay Bieber, Lorraine Lundquist, John Lee, and Brandon Sario. Group B will be Frank Ferry, Raji Robb, Carlos Amador, and Scott Abrams. And the last group, I already drew up the picture, why not? Is Annie Cho, then Jeff Dar, Joshua Jaeger, and Stella Malloyan. Thank you, candidates, all for being here. The first question, we'll go to everybody, and everybody will have up to 60 seconds to answer it, and it's a question I hope our host and sponsor will like. It's about neighborhood councils. The question is, "How do you plan on empowering neighborhood councils within CD-12 to address the needs of communities?" And we're gonna go left to right here. Mr. Bieber, go right ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for coming out and participating in this. I am the vice president of the North Hills West Neighborhood Council. I was formerly the vice president of the Sherman Oaks Neighborhood Council before I moved into the wonderful community that I live in now. My problem with the neighborhood council system is that the city council, the people that are in power, have done everything they can to take power away from the neighborhood councils and to take a voice away from the people. The thing that we need to do is ensure that the councilperson that you elect has your back, and the person who you elect is the person who is giving you a voice. When the city council piles additional regulations on neighborhood councils, when they make it very, very difficult for the neighborhood councils to do their job, and when the councilman does not back up what the neighborhood council and the community wants, that's what takes power away from neighborhood councils. So make sure that whoever you choose, make sure it's somebody who knows the neighborhood council system and has your back. Thank you.
Ms. Lundquist.
Thank you. My name's Dr. Lorraine Lundquist, and I believe in the power of participation in local democracy, and that's exactly what neighborhood councils are all about. I am the vice president of the North Ridge East Neighborhood Council. I will absolutely elevate neighborhood councils. I want to meet with neighborhood council members regularly from my council district office. I will show up to neighborhood council meetings and be accountable to the people of my district and the neighborhood council members in particular, and I would like to partner with neighborhood councils on neighborhood issues, whether it's block parties or specific issues that neighborhood councils are dealing with in their district. Let's solve them together. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Lee.
Good evening. My name's John Lee. You know, this question, the first councilman I ever worked for, Joel Wax, I was on his staff when we actually created the idea of neighborhood councils. Neighborhood councils is something that I believe as a chief of staff for CD-12, we've always engaged with, always listened to. I like to think that our track record speaks for itself on what I would do towards neighborhood councils, and that's listen to the voices of our neighborhoods.
Please no applause. Thank you. Mr. Sario.
Yeah, hi. My name's Brandon Sario. I'm not really a politician. I started going to neighborhood councils once I started running for office in 2018 when I ran for state senate, just because I got sick and tired of the people representing us not listening to us. And the thing that frustrates me about the neighborhood council system is you get representatives from each individual state senate, assembly, and city council district. And I've been to some neighborhood councils where they're laughing about what's going on in our district. That is a game, that they've been in power for 20, 30, 40 years, and it's frustrating for someone like me who's tired of seeing RVs going up and down my street. So to empower the neighborhood council, I would focus more on allowing them to have more say in the decisions that affect their neighborhoods. The next city councilman cannot be a lord of District 12 or a king of District 12, but we have to represent and we have to listen to everyone in this room. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ferry.
Whoa, hang on a second. Use the wireless one. It's on the link. I gotta dig it. I'm sorry. At least I didn't keep pulling. Neighborhood councils are absolutely, absolutely can have more say and more power within CD-12 as a whole. Right now, each of the councils are independent of the other, and there's not a lot of communication going on. They act independently within their communities. However, each of them is the eyes and ears, they're the experts of their community, and as a council member, we need to bring that expertise together. And so when we're looking to solve the problem of homelessness, it's a problem of the whole Northwest Valley. And we get all of the stakeholders involved, all the neighborhood council members together, so we can all have transparency, we all can have the same information at the same time, and as a total CD-12, come up with a solution to the biggest problems that we face today, not independently.
My name is Raji Robb, and I'm an aviator educator, and I recently, a few months ago, ran for US Congress. So I'm very familiar with the people in the district. Now, coming down to neighborhood councils, it's all about democracy, it's all about people. And what I see, and I talk to, I see very, very thin participation of people in neighborhood councils. You can see from the matter when the election takes place of how many people you see visiting the neighborhood council. I think the neighborhood councils have a lot to do to bring people together, to attract them, to make them a part of our democracy and our neighborhood district. But unless there is total participation of people and a stronger participation of people involved in the neighborhood council, I don't think we are going to get the result that we want to see. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Amador.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Carlos Amador, and I am a resident in Granada Hills and also a board member of the Granada Hills South Neighborhood Council. Every month that I go to the meetings, or even when I go to the committee meetings, I bring my daughter with me. She's five years old. Everybody compliments me because she's so well behaved and sits through the meeting, etc. But she is the anomaly. She's not the norm. Very few people are able to come out to the neighborhood councils because it's not during dinnertime, it's during homework time. So I want to make it easier in the sense of making it more participatory and accessible for working families to make sure that they're able to come with their daughters or their children, for them also to participate. I think that's one of the things that my daughter's also learning, to figure out whether it's in the library or in the hall whenever we're meeting. And I want to make sure that we're bringing that. I also want to make sure that we're giving more trainings to advocacy to make sure that they're empowered and have the tools. Thank you.
That's your time, Mr. Abrams. Mr. Abrams.
Yes, good evening. I'm Scott Abrams, and as an old high school civics teacher, I would tell my students that it's so important in our democracy to participate, and so I thank the neighborhood council members for stepping up and doing just that. As council member, I'll personally attend meetings, not just send my staff. I'll rely on their advice, and I want to tap into their passions. I've seen in my community of West Hills how the beautification team led by Fay Bartha and Dan Burns leadership on the neighborhood council there have really made West Hills a beautiful place, but they take that initiative. They go out there, they do the cleanups, and so they can provide important ways to supplement the services that are provided by a councilmatic office as well as by the city itself. And so I want to reach out to all the neighborhood councils and make sure we're tapping into that energy. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening. This is Annie Cho. I like being back at Castle Bay. This is where my children went to school, and I remember dropping them off and picking them up. It just seems like yesterday, but they're all grown now. My idea of empowering neighborhood councils is to make sure that we continue to have grassroots participation. It's so important. The whole notion of having neighborhood councils is to actually have representatives from the neighborhood. And I want to increase that dialogue by including representatives of various neighborhood councils within CD-12 to not only get together with themselves, but also to expand that with neighboring districts. I think it's so important for us to communicate, and I think it's also so important for us to continue to have a dialogue with not just representatives of the neighborhood councils, but also to include chambers of commerce and to other entities in the community in CD-12, because together and only together can we make our district better. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cho. Mr. Dar.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jeff Dar. I've lived in North Ridge in the district for the past 33 years. Four kids have gone to school here, so I know the community. I've also been a city commissioner for the past 15 and a half years. I'm gonna give some specifics to add to our dialogue here on what we can do. The budget, which is probably the biggest thing that happens in our city, right now by charter comes out in April 20, just came out. We need to get the charter, I'm sorry, we need to get the budget to come out earlier. And I would sit here and do everything I can to get then the neighborhood councils to have time to be leaders in the community so they can interact with their constituents and actually have input before the budget actually gets adopted, so that they can influence the budget. That's something missing in our process. Also, we have a shortage of city commissioners in CD-12. We have, I've been one for 15 and a half years, I'm one of the very few. We need to get people from neighborhood councils to be appointed as city commissioners so that we can have more of an actual contribution to the city.
Thank you. Mr. Jaeger.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Josh Jaeger. I'm a member of the Chatsworth Neighborhood Council and also sit on the land use committee there, just for a little bit of background. I think giving more authority to the neighborhood councils is a good start. I would encourage involvement. It would allow the neighborhood councils to be more reflective of the communities. You know, democracy is a beautiful thing. So encouraging more people, giving them more authority. I'll be the first to tell you, and it might be obvious, I don't live everywhere in the district. I reside in Chatsworth. Those who are experts in North Ridge and in Granada Hills, those who take initiative and step up and run for neighborhood council, they should have just as much say as what happens in their community as anybody else.
All right, thank you. Ms. Malloyan.
Hello, everyone. I'm Stella Malloyan. I've been a resident at District 12 for the past 40 years, 10 years in Chatsworth and 30 years in Porter Ranch. The question was how to empower neighborhood council. Empowerment comes in various ways. The real power is where and how we can use advocacy at city council level and how the neighborhood council members can sort of impact the decision-making. Funding for every neighborhood council should be raised so that you guys can have more impact. I also feel that, we all know, real power lies within the few committees within city council that make decisions, and the question is how can neighborhood council members or leadership have a voice to push our agenda forward? And I can tell you that in the past two decades, what we've done at LANE is engaging neighborhood councils directly to win campaigns for Los Angeles. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all. That concludes the first question. For this question, each candidate will have 45 seconds to respond. We're gonna go in a slightly different order. We're gonna start at the end of Group B, and that's where Mr. Abrams is, so Mr. Abrams will go first, and we'll head on down to the Bieber end and loop back over to the Malloyan end. So here's the question. And this question should let you get a little bit more into your own backgrounds. All of the following and more can be environmental problems. Restaurant emissions, garbage odors, neighbors' fireplaces, cigarette smoke, construction noise, traffic noise, noisy customers, noisy neighbors, distance to a park, lack of greenery, ugly views, and water quality. So the question is, how does your background affect how you see environmental problems? And what areas of environmental concern do you see as areas where the city can most easily improve things? Are those priorities for you?
Well, thank you. By way of background, for the last 17 years, I've been a senior aide to Congressman Brad Sherman, so I've been steeped in a lot of the environmental issues that have been facing the North Valley, whether it's fires at Stepney and Woolsey, whether it's the dump at Sunshine Canyon, and whether it's certainly the Porter Ranch gas leak. But there's issues throughout the city, and what you're raising are really issues of environmental justice, whether people throughout the city of LA have access to public space, to green space, to air that they can breathe and not get sick. I've been on the ground, working with the community to reduce pollution at Sunshine Canyon, to deal immediately with the Porter Ranch gas leak when I called for EPA inspectors and air filters for homes, and I'll continue that leadership on the council.
All right, thank you. Then Mr. Amador, heading your direction.
Thank you. Carlos Amador again. I'm myself, I'm an immigrant. I came here at a young age, and I remember when we first came to this country, we lived maybe half a mile away from the train tracks. And I remember hearing overnight the train passing by, and that was, you know, part of the makeup that makes me the leader I am today. I want to make sure that we're, when we're pushing for a Green New Deal in Los Angeles, we take into consideration the working-class communities of color that are most impacted by landfills, by pollution, by toxic waste, by oil refineries or oil drilling. So I want to make sure that we take all of that into consideration when we are pushing for and championing the Green New Deal in Los Angeles.
Thank you. Mr. Robb, 45 seconds.
Raji Robb, I'd just like to come down to the point. The biggest scale, the biggest judgment, is the people's voice. I've been going around, meeting people for years, looking at different difficulties, problems, issues that the community faces on day-to-day basis, and when you sit down and listen to the things that you've listed down, it will only come down to a collective voice of people because my experience is the experience in meeting with people, and everybody has the same question of environmental cleanliness, environmental positioning as far as the collective society is concerned, because environment today, whether it's pollution, whether it's odor, whether it's garbage, it all comes down to a collective decision.
All right. Well, thank you then. Mr. Ferry.
For 16 years, I served on the city of Santa Clarita, city council as a councilman and also as mayor. And so we dealt significantly with environmental issues. Our very first ordinance was an oak tree preservation, protecting our oak trees. We have a very strong concern for our ridgeline protections. We brought in, we started zero, and now we're up to over 9,000 acres of open space in public ownership. We aggressively protect the Santa Clara River for water recharge, and we actually, we go out there when there's a new development, we make sure that the quality of life for existing residents is maintained at a high level and not brought down by new development.
All right. So you're gonna, Mr. Sario, your background and environmental issues.
Again, I'm not a... I live here.
Oh, it's turned off.
Uh-oh. That's why it turned on. Hello, hello. Can you hear me now? I don't care if you're Republican or Democrat, I don't care what your political views are. Is this one better? Okay. There's so many things going on in our district, like Aliso Canyon, the Sunshine Canyon, that people have been in power for too long, and it affects all of us. My grandfather came here in 1961. I was born in this district in 1979, and the people that have been making decisions for us for all these years are the people that let Aliso Canyon happen, are the people that let Sunshine Canyon happen. I just want clean water, clean air. I take my dog to O'Melveney Park every single day. I love it here, I love the green spaces, and I love District 12.
That's your time. All right. Mr. Lee.
Throughout my time, throughout my time in CD-12, working on projects of keeping open space, but not only that, but keeping historical monuments, was something that's very, very personal, very important to me. See, I've grown up here, I lived here since 1978, so when Stony Point was gonna be developed with 45 condominiums around it, I stepped in, bought Jody's Ranch, and forever that's saved as a city of LA property. When Oak Ridge Estate was gonna be developed into 26 homes, I stepped in and saved that so the city, so you could all enjoy a space that represents what the valley used to look like back in the days when the stars lived here. A boat. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lundquist, go ahead.
Every single person who lives in our district deserves to be able to breathe clean air, to be able to drink clean water, to have access to beautiful places to play. I am the only candidate up here who actually changed her career. I used to be an astrophysicist, and after I became a mom, I became so concerned about environmental issues that I actually changed my career to become a sustainability professor at Cal State University North Ridge and to become someone fighting for the environment. I've been fighting for a number of environmental issues here in Council District 12. I've been there on the ground, fighting against the Aliso Canyon gas storage facility. I'm so glad you mentioned garbage odors because the Sunshine Canyon landfill has not been mentioned in any debate yet so far. Thank you very much.
All right. Mr. Bieber.
Growing up, my dad was a schoolteacher, so we had summers off, and we traveled the country. I visited almost every state in the United States and decided that I wanted to live here in California where we have beautiful open space and a wonderful climate. And so I have a unique understanding of how open space and how to protect our environment, whether it's wildlife corridors or whether it's something like the Aliso Canyon gas facility, making sure that that stays closed, or the Sunshine Canyon landfill, and making sure that doesn't affect the community. But in terms of open spaces, there was a mountain that was, that the community wanted to buy and protect that open space, and the city stepped in and helped, private industry stepped in and helped, and those are the kinds of things that we would like to partner with and do more of those sorts of things. Thank you.
All right. Now, Ms. Malloyan, down to you. Your background and how you see environmental problems.
Stella Malloyan, I've been an executive at an organization named LANE, and I have actively participated, developed, and voted, is this on? On policies that have been groundbreaking, that have helped hundreds of thousands of people. The examples of those campaigns are the Waste and Recycling Campaign, which increased recycling tremendously, improved jobs, and took extra trucks off the streets. Measure W with the county, we were the direct partners working on clean water that passed, and it's gonna create over $300 million for good jobs.
And that's your time. Sorry to say. All right, to move along, I think we're actually keeping the schedule pretty well.
We got three more.
I'm sorry, there's three more people on this question. All right, we got to the end.
I know, there's a lot of this on here.
But actually, when I was distracted, I wanted to just quickly check this mic. Hang on one second. This mic working? Hello? It's staying working. All right, so you guys down at the sand could use it.
All right. While I've spent my adult life, well, it's a young adult life, advocating for mass transit as well as recycling in the city with Recycla, what I provide to my community is my community perspective. I'm one of the only few up here that was born and raised in the district, can attest to the 1990s in Granada Hills of the smell of the Sunshine Canyon landfill as one of the reasons why my family uprooted from Granada Hills, our home north of Ceznon, and moved west to North Ridge, and where we now currently reside in Chatsworth. But in my own personal time, I've been an advocate for open space. I'm working with both the county, the city, and Caltrans in advocating for a perpetual dumping site at the corner of Topanga and Plumber to make that a pocket park, maybe even a corral for all the Chatsworth residents that are here today.
Okay, thank you. Now, Mr. Dar.
Jeff Dar. So going back to when I was young, I fought for years so we would have a bottle bill so we could actually have the first recycling in the state. And more recently, as an airport commissioner for the last three and a half years, I've been involved with doing things at a inherently dirty, not exciting place, LAX, and turning it into a green place. As you may or may not know, we're connecting rail to the airport, and we're doing so on time without tax dollars. We are sitting here creating zero emission fleets and vehicles. We are empowering the people who do business with the airport by giving them grants to have zero emission vehicles. We actually recycle our vegetation and do 47,000 tons to the zoo every year, and we do all of this in ways of construction that is completely sustainable. I want to do this same thing for the city of LA as your council member.
Thank you. Ms. Cho, now, your background and how you see environmental issues. What the mic's reaching.
Annie Cho again. I served on the Los Angeles Water and Power Board of Commissioners for four years, and on environmental issues, my thoughts are the following four topics. One, Aliso Canyon must be shut down as quickly as possible. In the meantime, we must demand SOCal gas, submit monthly, I mean yearly reports so that we can measure their progress to getting it shut down. On Sunshine Canyon, we must find out what is the status of the amenities trust fund and what happened to the oversight committee. I want to make sure that local residents are put back on that committee. And then, lastly, on Santa Susana, I support risk-based, minimally invasive cleanup of that site. It's unacceptable that nothing has been done in the last 50 years.
Okay, thank you. I believe that now concludes the question number two. We'll move on to question number three. We'll keep moving in the same direction, but this time we'll start with Group A. Mr. Sario, go first, we'll go... Mr. Sari, go first, we'll go to my left and then back over there. So here's question number three. All of you will have, each of you will have 45 seconds on this one. It's a big one. What is your plan to end or alleviate the homelessness or street people crisis in the valley? What are the solutions you would advocate for this council district and how would you seek to fund them? And then how and how quickly will you decide where the first mayor required shelter should go in CD 12?
Okay, 45 seconds. Okay.
All right, now, listen, I'll tell it all, please.
We had a form...
60 seconds each on this.
We had a form a couple of weeks ago, and I think I was the only candidate that said I will not put a bridge house in CD 12. I don't like the mayor holding us hostage, saying that until we put a bridge house into this district that he will enforce the Jones settlement. I was, I go to 140 houses a day, door to door. And I was going to Chatsworth and Woodley to get on the 118 to come to Granada Hills to go door to door. And I saw a man completely naked and nude over there on the corner of Chatsworth and Woodley. And so I stopped my car and went over there to ask him what he was doing. And as I did that, another man came over with his bicycle and started hitting me with his bicycle. This is not the area I grew up in, okay? We need to help, there's a million things we need to do, Prop 47, Prop 57, we need to fight these lawsuits, we need to get a little bit tougher, we need to enforce our laws. There's a million things we need to be doing rather than building just bridge housing and investing in mental health. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Lee. Do you have an inch, they take a mile. All right, go.
Again, look, we need to be compassionate. These aren't, these aren't fleas we're talking about, we're talking about human beings here. And we need to be compassionate, and I'm the only person up here that's actually done something about it. I built a 90-bed shelter in the middle of Northridge, worked with the community and the San Fernando Valley Rescue Mission to build that shelter. Not only that, but we need to be compassionate, not only to the homeless, but we need to be compassionate to the businesses and you, the homeowners. That's why when you drive around District 12, you don't see the problem that other districts have or other communities. Because when I, because I funded a program with sanitation, LAPD, Department of Transportation to go out, do outreach to the homeless population in our district, we get that service three or four times a week. Other districts get that twice a month. That's why this election is important. Programs like that, experience needed to bring the funds to this district.
All right, Ms. Lundquist, thank you. Now, your solutions for the homelessness, street people crisis.
Yes, thank you. I believe everyone deserves to have a roof over their head. And whether you share that belief or not, the evidence actually shows that the Housing First model is actually the most effective way to fight homelessness, and it's also the cheapest way to fight homelessness. So right now, when people are living on our streets, they actually cost us about $140 to $160 per day, us as taxpayers. That's because of emergency room visits, interactions with the police and sanitation, things like that. It's actually cheaper to give folks a home and to provide services on top of that, mental health services, drug addiction counseling, career counseling, and all the various services that are needed to help get people back on their feet. And that is the, that is the cheapest thing to do. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Bieber, again, and I haven't already been able to address how they would cite the first mayor required shelter, so if you want to pick up on that.
So here's part of the problem, which is that the city is looking this, looking at this as a housing crisis. It's not only a housing crisis, that's a component to it, but there are, there are other components to it as well, which is a mental health component and a substance abuse component. So one of the things that we need to do as a city is to advocate for stronger conservatorship laws so we can make sure that the people that need help are getting the help. Those people who cannot make good decisions for themselves are not able to be helped because their family members are out there trying to help them, and they can't help them because the law requires that these people become a danger to themselves or others before anybody can step in. There's, there's many other aspects, I've got my 15 seconds, but there, but we need to, we need to strengthen those laws, but we also need to enforce the laws that are on the books. Because we need to be compassionate to the community as well as the people on the street. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Malloy, we're back to you on the homelessness crisis and finding shelter, et cetera, et cetera. Your solutions, please.
Everyone in a civilized society deserves dignity and integrity. And District 12 has its own homeless population. I call them our homeless neighbors. There, this is a crisis that we have to address. This is not something that we can push to other places, we have to find innovative solutions. I feel that homelessness is a direct side effect of lack of housing. I believe in order for us to have impact on the homeless population with mental illness, we need to have social services. And I have a full plan of short-term, midterm, and long-term solutions for homeless population. And I'm going to strongly address this issue if I become a councilman, when I become a councilman.
There you go. All right, Mr. Yeager.
Instead of pointing at the cause of homelessness, let's point at a solution. And I have one for you. It's with input from 250 members of the Chatsworth community over the past three months. And it's at the corner of Noroff and Canoga, it's an MTA bus maintenance facility lot. It's very much underutilized. We can use H, Triple H, and Prop 1 funding, as well as there's a shortfall of about $700 million coming from the state in terms of SB 12 or 18, I can't remember off the top of my head. I've engaged with Hope of the Valley, N-Mend, both nonprofits that operate in the San Fernando Valley, they've both agreed to run programs in this facility. It's going to address both mental and physical health as well as job force training. It's by public transportation where we can get these people who are suffering from homelessness, get them back into the workforce, and get them back to being contributing members of our society.
Thank you. Mr. Dar.
Jeff Dar. First, not even a question, the biggest issue facing us in this district and the city is homelessness. As your council member, I will do everything in my power to not just reduce but to end homelessness, including in the city. We need to do it specifically by creating immediately safe, secure parking so we get all the vehicles that are parking around our neighborhood every night and moving somewhere where we can start having people come to them and help them get off, out of their vehicles and getting assistance. We need to have immediately safe beds to get people out of the tents on the street. We need to free our police from being social workers. And we also need to cut the bureaucracy and culture of the city so we can start building affordable housing and not have it take five years because of unnecessary time delays. And we also, to get this done in this district, I will sit here and reach out to everyone and get everyone passionate involved so you'll be part of the solution, not just the leaders of the city. Thank you.
There we are. Okay, now, Ms. Cho.
Annie Cho. I like to tackle the homeless crisis by working to provide housing and wraparound services for the homeless families. We have so many homeless families, usually led by a single mother with her young children living off the streets. And this is completely not acceptable in my neighborhood. I want to make sure that we get the young children off the streets because eventually they're going to become the next generation of our workforce. And if we're going to be globally competitive, we want to make sure that we provide the right kind of environment for them. And I also want to find a way to focus on those that are one paycheck away from being homeless. And I also want to emphasize that not every option is appropriate for every neighborhood. So all the local stakeholders have to participate in the dialogue from the get-go.
Thank you. Mr. E. You bring the mobile, pass the mobile mic or whatever mic reaches him. I think that mobile mic works better down by that end. This is closer to the receivers, but I'm not sure about that.
Well, first, let me reject the part of the question that called these people street people. When my brother-in-law, Josh, was living on the streets because of his mental illness, he was not a street person, he was Josh Haber. As far as solutions to this problem, I understand, because I've worked in the congressional office, that these problems are multifaceted. At the federal level, we need Section 8 vouchers so people who are housing insecure can find residency. When we have people who are mentally ill, the state can chip in and help provide assistance there. And locally, we have to cite locations where people can live. We need housing first, it's a proven model, and I do support it because it gets results with the wraparound social services. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Amador.
Thank you so much. My background is as a social worker. I was trained and I graduated with my master's degree in social work at UCLA. And I learned the skills and the tools to use to be able to address the most pressing issues in our community, including the homelessness crisis. I want to make sure that we are building and fulfilling the pledge of 222 units here in the district. I think it's disheartening that the current leaders have not been able to break ground. I want to make sure that we're addressing the issue also in a holistic way, making sure that we're providing the necessary social services, mental health services, and health services for our community members who are experiencing homelessness. I think it is our duty as a city and as a society to take care of the most vulnerable people in our community. Thank you.
Rosemary has given us the sign. Thank you.
Rajiv Robb, again, people, we are the American people, okay? We are the nation, we are the wealthiest nation on the planet. This is not just a social or homeless issue, this is a humanitarian issue. Now, I have an exclusive edge on it because my son is a psychiatrist, he just did his double doctorate in mental health, he works for UCLA. My daughter works for also the Department of Mental Health, and she finds housing for the homeless every day. I get to hear stories of so many people who, especially kids who have to be on the street just because they want to be safe, they take drugs because they don't want to be jumped at night. But I would come to the final statement here is that it is a collective issue. We need funding, we have to get funding from the federal government, that's the only way we can make this thing happen. Thank you.
Okay. A few people on the Ninth District Circuit Court made a decision that homeless can sleep on our sidewalks, public parkways, and have encampments. Also having their belongings and/or trash ultimately, we now know, has some communicable diseases, and the panhandling's gone out. There is nobody in this room that believes the homeless situation in CD 12 is better now than it is over the past eight years. The thing we're lacking is leadership. Our past council member has completely failed, documented the last three years, did nothing towards the homelessness problem. And if we continue to do that, expect it to go tenfold. The answer's not to pit the neighborhood councils against each other and fight on who's going to get excited. Once again, bring all the nine neighborhood councils together and come up with an answer together on what's acceptable.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, thank you all for your answers to that question. Please hold the applause, as I mentioned before. So now we're going to do some quick response questions, and each question will go fairly quickly because I'll only be asking it to one of the three groups, to members, Group A, the first four, Group B, the second four, Group C, the third four. And we're not going to do anything fancy like mixing up the order within the groups, but I will mix up the order of the groups. But to start, we'll just start on the follow-up from the audience's perspective. Mr. Bieber, in Group A, please answer the following question, I think this is something Ms. Cho might have mentioned before. The sunshine, let's say sunshine three times fast, the Sunshine Canyon Community Amenities Trust Fund was established to provide funds for community amenities in the City of Los Angeles within five miles of the Sunshine Canyon landfill. By ordinance, the city, the local city council member is supposed to appoint a community amenities oversight committee to watch over the fund. As the council member, how quickly would you establish the committee and how would you go about appointing its members? And do you have any ideas now on how the funds money should or should not be used?
How much time, before we start, how much time do we have?
Oh, 30 seconds each for these... 30 seconds, that's right, I'm sorry. We've got a lot of questions.
We'll see how much we can get done in 30 seconds. But first of all, I think that we have, first, we have to make sure that those funds are in the fund, and a lot of times we have funds that are not being funded even though they're supposed to be. We have to make sure, 15 seconds are...
What, what's that is a given that the funds are in the fund?
Right, well, but that, but that's not always a given, okay? The other thing is, in terms of deciding who should be on the committee, I'm not the lord of the, of the council district. The community should help decide who is going to be, especially the people that are affected around the landfill. Those are the people who should have first shot at being on that.
So you'll bring in the committee. All right, thank you. Ms. Lundquist.
Thank you. So this, you know, everybody, again, deserves to live without those kinds of fumes coming off of a landfill in their home. People should be able to live in their homes without, without this kind of effect on them. So I want to make sure this oversight committee is in place quickly, but I want to make sure that there's community input. It shouldn't just be me, the council member, appointing the community. I want input from the neighborhood councils, in fact, neighborhood councils should get some of the appointments and as well as the activist community that has been coming out to fight the Sunshine Canyon landfill. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lee.
Throughout my career, I've been a big believer in spending a dollar today so we don't have to spend a dollar, $100 tomorrow. That's why I've always focused on youth programs. When I saw this money just sitting there gathering dust and interest, I decided to do something about it and help fund the 25 or so odd schools that were in that five-mile district because these are our most vulnerable population. And let those schools decide what they wanted to do with those funds. This is something that I've always believed in as a proponent for youth projects, which I'll discuss more later.
Thank you. Mr. Lee, now, Mr. Sari, now, please.
Yeah, we see in our area lobbyist after lobbyist after lobbyist become the next person who represents us. For this particular issue, I would go to the Granada Hills neighborhood councils, both south and north, and determine, let them determine who would represent us. I'm sick and tired of it, I'm sick and tired of the games, this should have been done a long time ago. And again, I was born and raised in Granada Hills, I love this place, and thank you.
All right, now, there's a question for Group B, starting with Mr. Ferry. How much more or less should LADWP be doing to fight climate change? How concerned are you about LADWP's electric rates going up, and what would you do to make sure they are appropriate?
Well, it's actually a backdoor question because Aliso Canyon is completely tied to our electrical levels. The gas is predominantly used to generate electric more than, actually, natural gas. And so for us, we definitely want to make sure that Aliso has a third-party, neutral, independent person that's making sure it's safe and high standards or it closes. And I don't want to comment what DWP should do if they're contingent on getting gas from Aliso Canyon.
All right, thank you. Now, Mr. Robb.
Rajiv Robb, again, everything comes back to the people. People are the ones who are suffering, people are the ones who have to face these high bills. And when it comes to participation and the contribution, when it comes to DWP, I think they're way behind in shaking hands with the services they're offering and their contribution towards the, their side of the, of the effort should be more than what they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Amador.
Thank you. I think we have obviously a huge commitment and a huge responsibility to make sure that we save the environment for the future of our children and our communities. I want to make sure that as we commit to doing 100% renewable energy by 2030, we want to make sure that we're engaging every single agency in our city, in our region, to make sure that we reach that goal, surpass that goal. And that includes DWP, that includes shutting down Aliso Canyon, and that includes engaging with business, with labor unions to make sure that we have a just transition into the new great future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Abrams, DWP rates, climate change.
Yes, Scott Abrams here. So I believe that DWP should be doing more. Too often, they regard people who want to be sustainable and institutions that want to be sustainable as competitors, not as partners in greening our city. That's true with our universities where they provide, they put solar panels at their school, and the DWP wants to cap the amount of energy that they can utilize. So we need to be greening our city, it's an investment, and renewables is an investment in our future. So we absolutely have to take those steps. And I support the mayor's initiatives to electrify our city through cars and through buildings. Thank you.
All right, so that's the end of Group B. We're going to go to Group C with a different question, but before we get started with that, I just wanted to ask anybody who is yet to submit a question, doesn't have a card and wants to, please raise your hand for ushers to come by, pick them up, forget cards. We'll keep the process going. I think I saw some questions get to the orders already. All right, thank you. All right, so now, Group C, starting with Ms. Cho. How about this question?
How about it?
Here we go. I'm almost, I'm very interested to hear the response to this question. It starts with the fact that the City of Los Angeles does not have authority to shut down Aliso Canyon. If Aliso Canyon continues to operate, what would you propose the City of Los Angeles do about it?
Yes, it is true that the City of Los Angeles does not have any jurisdiction over Aliso Canyon. However, the city council member can definitely work more effectively with state and federal elected officials because they have jurisdiction over the regulatory agencies. elected officials because they have jurisdiction over the regulatory agencies. I would definitely travel to Sacramento, to Washington DC and to anywhere else where our voices can be heard. And I will again demand that SoCal Gas submit yearly reports on their progress to shutting it down because I don't want them to come to us in the eighth year or the ninth year and say, oh, by the way, we need another 10 years. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dar.
Jeff Dar, here we are at Ground Zero, school that was closed. The gas thing started on my birthday, so I remember it extremely well. We need to sit here, I mean seriously, it's, you know, we're here, aeropilots, not the answer. What we need to do is, and I will fight in my power, to sit here and rally the neighbors and give a voice so that we could work with our county, our state and our federal legislators and every power group we can find so that we can unite the community to create as loud a voice and as loud a protest, we can explore more lawsuits potentially. We need to sit here and fight, fight, fight. We have to shut down Eliso Canyon now, not years from now.
Thank you. Mr. Yager.
I think we can morph the second question in with this one as well. It is correct, the city council has no jurisdiction to shut down Eliso Canyon, but what we can do is reinvest with DWP in electrifying the grid, making reinvestments in green technologies to lessen our dependency on the use of the gas from SoCal Gas or from Eliso Canyon. We could look, you know, it's already operating at 30% capacity, the less that they have to, you know, take away for our use, the less that there's going to be a need for it. So as long as we continue to reinvest in our green technology, we'll see less dependency on Eliso Canyon.
Ms. Malloy.
Stella Malloy. Eliso Canyon gas leak is extremely personal to me and I commit to shutting it down, not with a magic wand, but through phases. If we pay attention to our mayor's green utility master plan, we are committing to reducing and ending natural gas usage. Therefore, we're not going to need the value generating station. Therefore, we're not going to need Eliso Canyon. We're still having mini leaks and it's just unacceptable. The largest natural disaster, criminal disaster of our time. And I feel that we can be advocates pushing city council to do that.
Thank you. Thanks very much. All right, another quick question round, 30 seconds answers each. We'll start with Group B and that's Mr. Ferry. This is kind of the quality of life round. First question for just Group B is whether or not the mayor appoints you to the Metro Board, as he has various city council members. What are your personal thoughts on ways to improve regional traffic and mass transit? And locally, what do you think about great streets ideas such as road diets to provide for bike lanes and wider sidewalks? So yeah, Mike right in front of you actually.
There you go, I'm sorry.
It's working, it's working.
I actually was elected initially because roads and traffic were a big issue up in the Santa Clarita Valley. And I actually founded the Transportation Alliance. We found $300 million in money from private, state, federal money in order to build a cross-valley connector. Here in this district, we absolutely have to have B and T fees, which are bridge and thoroughfare fees, where we can make decisions as a council member and not lead it up to a development. In addition, it's a complete, oh.
Sorry about this, that's a big question. You got to be quick. Did you want to finish your sentence?
I want to be fair.
Okay, there we go.
Can you hear me? Hello? Yes, Raji Rab again. I think transportation has always been a major cause and concern for all communities. It will remain to be a major cause and concern for all communities. We need to invest in the infrastructure, we need to have the best scientific approaches to the infrastructure that we can lead to a better society, a better future for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Almodore.
Thank you so much. One of the things that we need to, you know, and it connects to also the issue of climate action, is making sure that we're able to expand dramatically the mass transportation system into, to reach into the West Valley, into the Northwest Valley as well. I want to make sure that we do that. I want to make sure that we explore the idea, just like Council Member Bonan has in his district, of the LA on-demand bus system to make sure that we're having much more accessible bus transportation system and ultimately also having more equitable systems for bike lanes and for pedestrian use in the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Abrams.
Yeah, a few weeks ago, I attended the Granada Hills Little League opening and I watched parents run for their lives as they were trying to cross the south side of Rinaldi to the north side. We need more traffic safety, we need more enforcement on our streets, there's still people racing on our streets, it's dangerous. Regionally, we need rail through the Sepulveda Pass. As Congressman Sherman's chief deputy, I've been working for years with Metro to get that option and we need the best option that's going to serve the most people. It's a heavy rail option, it's going to connect us up with the West LA and the airport and get people off the 405, which is the most congested in the country.
All right, thank you. So we're moving on to another group here, sorry, Ms. Cho, I got to ask a different question. Somebody before, this is 30 second answers, again, somebody before I heard mention RVs. What would you do about the RV parking and other lived-in vehicles parked on streets in the district? Do you have any suggestions also about parkings in general that you could ask?
I think shortage of parking is a problem because as Angelenos, we have a tendency to get in our cars if we have to go more than two blocks. And then we circle around for 20 minutes looking for a parking spot, polluting the air and causing more congestion. So we have to work harder to find more parking and make it more available and.
How about the RVs?
RVs, as far as RVs, a lot of neighbors are putting up no parking 2 to 6 AM signs and they think that they've solved the problem because it's out of sight. But even though it's out of sight, it is not out of mind. We are just playing musical chairs, we need a more comprehensive program.
All right, thank you. Mr. Dar.
Hi, Jeff Dar. So with the RVs, this district has been really good about, not being sarcastic, putting up where you can park without telling anyone where you should park. And people in cars and RVs, they need to have a safe, secure parking and if they're all together, they'll be safer, we'll be safer and we can start having people reach out to them to get them out of their vehicles. Right now, we're just moving them around, that's not a solution. And with regard to parking, the city really needs to have a smart parking app that's not private, city, so that we can connect with our meters and it's not a gotcha, so you get these expensive tickets. Sounds simple, but it'll make our lives a lot better, which is quality.
Mr. Yager.
Well, in that homelessness plan that I addressed probably about 25 minutes ago, it'll have safe parking, it'll allow for these RVs to come off the streets and have a place to stay. But I think in a greater context, we need to talk about mobility. That's transitioning the orange line to light rail, enough with the throwing money at it, making it, you know, bus rapid transit with train guards on there. But I'm also a proponent of the North San Fernando Valley bus rapid transit option one that would connect the east to the west of the valley through CSUN. CSUN is a natural transit hub, you know, there's thousands of college students that are looking for parking all the time and I think that's just a natural fit.
There you go, thank you. Ms. Malloy.
If I'm not mistaken, your specific question was, what's our opinion about RVs?
Yeah, what we do about RVs and any suggestions you could add about parking in general.
Yes, so my opinion, like many of my neighbors, is I do not like to see humongous RVs parked in my, on my street or in my neighborhoods, especially long-term. And I do feel that the city needs to come up with a plan. We have humongous parking lots that are empty, privately owned, to give them incentives where these RVs can go park and neighbors will be happy and they would feel safe. Thank you.
All right, now over to Group A, Mr. Bieber, you'll go first. Question, a quality of life type question, there's Mike, how about that one, just don't knock over anybody's drink. 30 seconds, what do you think about the franchised trash system that was put in place recently in the city of LA, which took away the ability of some building owners to choose their own trash companies? What, if anything, would you propose to change it?
The thing that I would propose to change it is to eliminate it entirely. This is the worst idea that the city council ever had, and it has some pretty bad ideas, so that's saying something. And we said originally, when this idea was being floated, that this was not going to work, it was going to raise, it was going to raise costs, it was going to make like much more difficult. I've talked to a lot of business owners and this is one of their main topics that they are upset about because they're getting charged ridiculous fees and it's because the city decided that they were going to create monopolies. When you create monopolies, then this is what you get because they have no concept of what it is to run a business.
Sorry, I wasn't looking.
There's a stop sign, okay. Or any idea about economics in general.
Apologies to the times.
Well, it's true, this system was rolled out very poorly with a lot of lack of notice and, you know, instant tripling in fees for a lot of businesses in this district and that simply isn't fair, it is inappropriate. At the same time, our city needs to, needs to change its waste systems. We need to reduce the total amount of waste that we are producing and we need to have better systems for recycling. China is no longer accepting the recycling that we used to send to them. We need to create local markets for recycling products and organics recycling.
Mr. Lee.
Yeah, the recycle program is one of the worst programs the city's ever come up with. I'm proud that CD-12 was a lone vote against this program because I disagree anytime the city feels that they know how to run your business better than you. I refuse to think that, you know, we can't, we shouldn't be engaging our business community to come and tell us, well, there's small things or big things, they make decisions on what should be on our menus, how much time we should be giving off. It's just that the city needs to stick to its own business and stay out of small business.
Mr. Sario.
Again lobbyist, the current member of the city council, I believe, was a lobbyist for the trash monopoly. I've been working with David Hernandez, who goes to court every day to fight against the trash monopoly. I've been going to small business, to small business, to small business and they are being hammered every single day by this trash monopoly. It should have never been started, it should have never been implemented and I'm sick and tired of what's going on. And again, we need ordinary, regular people that are not connected to the people for 20 to 30 years of lobbyists or to donors or to this or that. I'm just sick and tired of it.
All right, thank you. So that's the quality of life round, now we'll move on to the government round and we'll start with question 10, which goes to Group C. And again, it's just left to right, so Ms. Cho, you start. Here we go. Where do you think the police department has not been focusing enough resources? How would you suggest LAPD modify its approach to law enforcement?
I support a community-based policing and I think that because we have such a homeless crisis, police officers are becoming more and more of social workers and counselors and I want to make sure that police officers get the right training and equipment to truly protect and serve.
All right, thank you.
Jeff Dar, we need to sit here and have the police do a better allocation for the patrol so they're being done in a more efficient way for us. In addition, while I believe that we need to make sure they have the adequate resources, going back to homelessness, our police are spending way too much time because we have not ended homelessness. And if we end homelessness, the police can go back to their, not dealing with homeless. It's as simple as that and homelessness is going to be the issue we have to resolve if we want to make the community safe and make the police effective.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Yager.
All right, the one thing that's great about CD-12 is that we have a low crime rate. I very much appreciate the work that all of our uniform men and women are doing in this district, but we can always help them out, we can do more. We can find ways in the budget to allocate more resources to them, let's reinvest in technology. There's no reason why the city attorney's office needs to be spending $200 million a year in outside legal counsel. There are plenty of attorneys in the district, in the office that are willing and able to do the job, let's find ways to be more efficient with our funds and further support our law enforcement officials.
Thank you. Ms. Malloy, I'll ask the police department.
Police department needs adequate resources to do their job right. They ensure our security and safety of our homes and communities. And even though I feel they do need to tend to the homeless and homeless calls and homeless population, but we need to have services for the intake of this homeless population that they have to go and figure out what to do. I do, I think we're very weak on that, I think the city can come up with programs partnering with police to ensure everybody's safety. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now over to Group A. Everybody was going to get a chance to answer a question they didn't answer, so hold that thought. They didn't get asked, is what I meant. All right, well, on Group A, sorry, Mr. Bieber, what ethics reforms, ethics reforms do you think the city of LA needs in order to improve the community's trust that politicians are not giving undue weight to wealthy interests or to the personal financial interests of family members or friends?
Well, I support that the ethics reforms that are currently being, going through the city council, it's taken forever for them to get there and it's time that we eliminate the pay-to-play with regards to the developers and those groups. But here's the, here's the real problem, you can put all the laws in place that you want, but unless you elect the right people, the honest people, then, then no matter, no matter how many laws you put in place, they're going to find a way to get around it as we see time after time after time. If you want something different, you have to elect somebody different and that's, that's how you get around the ethics problems.
There you go, thank you for that. On ethics reform, Ms. Lundquist.
We need to restore trust in our local government. People don't trust our government because we are, we keep having the same people in power and that happens because of money. It's because of the developer money, it's because of the corporate money, it's because of things like behested payments and we need to ban all of those things. We need to have grassroots-powered candidates like myself who are, who are funded by the community, who have the community members coming out for them, volunteering for them, giving small dollar donations and that is the way that we are going to reform our city government.
Thank you, thank you. All right, that's enough. Thank you. Now, Mr. Lee.
Everything, every donation, every behest payment, you need full disclosure. I mean, I think we should be doubling down on what Council Ru introduced, not only if we're going to get rid of developer donations, then we should get rid of developers' donations to independent expenditures. Because basically what you do is just push that money into bigger pots, into super PACs that can act without knowing which candidate they support.
All right, Mr. Sario.
Again, we need to either drain this swamp or drain the sewer in the Los Angeles City Council. I'm tired of it. I'm tired of the same people who are lobbyists or are getting donations from one person to another and then taking a job and then becoming a city councilman and then going back and forth. That needs to end. We need to have a restriction on how many years you have to wait in order to become or run for office after you take donations for anyone that has contracts with the city council and we need to have a strict, strict restrictions to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now moving over to the next group, Group B, the last question in the government round. What is your opinion of the partial public financing system for city election campaigns? Are the funding levels and the requirements for the candidates excessive, appropriate and sufficient? Are there any additional requirements or disclosures you would like to see imposed on candidates who apply for public financing?
I'll be honest, I'm very, very jealous of Ms. Lundquist and asked her to teach me on how to do it, so that's my initial gut reaction. I honestly, I truly believe it's the only way for a large group of people to access campaigns and elections in order to have an opportunity to serve in the government. It's so stacked against a regular, normal citizen that only city matching funds is the only way you can potentially even be able to compete.
So you like the system apparently, thank you. Mr. Rab.
Raji Rab again, I think the city matching fund opens doors to corruption. I think city matching fund opens doors to bad ideas because it allows you to collect about $100 from a large number of people, which is, which should be modified so that it should allow, if somebody is trying to go for matching funds, it should allow reasonable amount of funds to get together. Right now, it's a misfit, it's open, it's opening doors to corruption and it's been detected in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Almodore, use that quarter mill. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, before I even decided to run for this seat, I was out there at the city hall, at city council, demanding for a change and a reform on the public financing laws for elections. And so the city council took a decision to lower it from $25,000 threshold to $20,000 threshold this election and we're going to go now see in the 2020 election at the threshold lower to $11,400. So that's really a big, a big change to allow for grassroots candidates to run and that is really the number one proof to get rid of corruption, to be able to elect grassroots candidates into this position.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Almodore. There you go, Mr. Abrams.
Scott Abrams, I do support the public matching funds formula and because of my support from the community, I have submitted my paperwork to receive those funds and I'm grateful for it. I do think there should be more disclosures though. For instance, at the federal level, candidates have to disclose their boards and positions that they hold so we know that there's not conflicts of interest. That is not required on the Form 700 that we've all filled out here. So we do need to know whether there's conflicts and we need to hold our elected officials accountable. accountable.
Thank you. All right, that does it for the direct line, the direct questions, the questions I'm imposing on you. And now, as promised, about five minutes behind where I wanted to be. To me, that's fine, we're pretty much on time. Yeah, I'm going to give everybody an opportunity to, I'm going to give everybody an opportunity to answer a question you weren't asked but would like to answer. And we'll do it the easy way this time. We kind of started with, all right, you want to start at the other end? I'll start at the other end. We'll start at, Ms. Malloy, one of the questions that you didn't get a chance to answer. Oh, I'm sorry, 45 seconds each. Go ahead, sorry. Go right for it. Just start when she starts talking. Okay.
Okay, let's start. So I want to talk about the recycler, the waste ordinance that was passed in city hall. And I want to remind you all where that was flawed. The policy itself is exactly what we are fighting for. It's creating recycling on a mass basis, improving jobs, and getting extra trucks out of the, out of the streets. Where was that failed? It was failed in city hall under the past, including the past councilmen that stepped down midterm, where they did not airtight the regulation. And then it became Wild, Wild West. So let's remember, the policy is groundbreaking. The implementation is where it was flawed. And that's where I'm going to fight very hard and hold city hall accountable when I get to city hall on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Yager, something you'd like to answer that was not asked to you directly.
I'd like to address the Sunshine Canyon landfill community amenities trust fund. It's something that I've dealt with as a child in Granada Hills, and as I mentioned before, the reason why we moved away. If elected as your next council member, 100% of those funds will be spent back into the community of Granada Hills. Half of the board, the advisory board, will be made up from members of the community from within a five-mile radius, the other half will be within a 10-mile radius. They will be picked from, by the community themselves. The council office will have some advisory role in that selection, but it'll be from the community that makes that decision.
Thank you. Jeff Dar.
Jeff Dar, I'm going to answer the question about ethics reform. To me, it's sort of an issue that we have to hold people accountable, and we have to sit here, and we need more disclosures, but I come from the background as a lawyer, where I'm held to the highest ethical requirements. And I learned a long time ago, because I've been a lawyer for about 37 years now, that the culture we need for our council people, that we look up to, is if it doesn't smell right or look right, you just don't do it. We have a culture in our council where instead we'll spend time trying to look for the loophole of how to do what just isn't right. We need to sit here and change that. It's how I live. We will all know that our members are doing the right thing if that's how they also live. I am very proud that I have long at the beginning of this campaign, and have been holding to it, have stated that I will not accept real estate developer money. We need to sit here and do more of that.
Thank you. Annie Cho, 45 seconds on whatever.
Annie Cho, I want to talk about ethics reform. I want to tell you that I believe in what motions are being pushed through city council right now, introduced by David Rue, but I think it can be strengthened. And I think that in city of Los Angeles in particular, we have a tendency to apply Band-Aid approach. I would like to see reform that is, that can fix our ethics environment for once and for all. Why is it that we have the FBI coming in to have investigations every 10, 15 years? I think we really have to have a reform that's got some bones. And I believe in that because I'm not owned by anyone, and I do not owe anything to anybody. So I'm a strong proponent of ethics reform.
All right, thank you. Mr. Abrams.
Yes, on the question of LAPD resources, I would want to see more resources dedicated to street safety enforcement, local traffic enforcement. You know, we have an epidemic of illegal speeding and distracted driving, and those are killing our residents. And due to a crazy, insane policy out of the state of California, speed limits on our streets are going up in order to enforce speed limits. Try to process that for a second. That's because they haven't been monitoring the speeds of traffic. But now, as we've been monitoring those speeds, we now have a chance to enforce those once again. That's where I want to see our resources built.
All right, thank you. Mr. Hamador, you want to pick up one of the other mics? That mic doesn't seem to be doing so well. Do you have, how about the mic that's in front of Mr. Rob there?
All right, thank you. Carlos Amador again. I wanted to also address the issue of ethics and ethics reform. I am also pledging to not accept any contributions from corporations or developers, and I also want to make sure that we have a strong ban on any developer corporate contributions as well as behested payments. I also believe that we need to invest on the ethics commission staffing. During the great recession that we had over 10 years ago, the commission staff was slashed all the way to 12 staff members, and now it takes four years to audit an election campaign, a specific campaign. We need to reinvest on the ethics commission to make sure that we have enough resources and enough staff members to enforce the laws that we're passing. Thank you.
Raji Rab again. I would like to reinforce a few words about LAPD. I think our community is prospering in peace because LAPD is on the job. We must be vigilant about the public safety, student safety, school safety. We have seen horrific, horrific headlines that have come from time to time, and we have to prepare our LAPD to stop any such incident from happening in the future. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Ferry.
Nothing frustrates me more, and I consider the weakest form of leadership, when someone says, "We have no power, we have no, this is not my issue, I'm going to stay out of it." That is the worst weak leadership you can have. Eliso Canyon was a foreseeable problem from day one. You have the second-largest facility that is wholly natural gas. Who in here doesn't know when there's gas in your kitchen, it could blow up? All right? The water mains break in LA. Why? Because they're old. So when you have wells that were built in 1950s, when the safety valves were taken out in the 70s and not replaced, but the homes and the schools and the parks get closer and closer to where they're right on the property line, that is a weak form of leadership. And to stand here today now and to say, "There's nothing we can do," that's a problem.
Thank you. There's your time. All right. Mr. Sario.
First off, I don't know who said it, but the Devonshire Division and the volunteer force of the District 12 is the best in Los Angeles. We have the largest volunteer force here in Los Angeles. In 2017, I never wanted to be involved in politics, ever in my life. I hate it. I hate being attacked, I hate my girlfriend being threatened, I hate everything about being in politics. But I, I got sick and tired of seeing the same people representing us. I worked on the Yes on Six campaign because our gas prices are way too high. There's no reason why we should be paying $4 a gallon when Texas is paying $2.80 a gallon. My uncle died in an RV. He was homeless. Rich housing would not have saved his life, okay? Mental health, drug abuse would have saved his life if we had any resources whatsoever. That's why I'm running for office today.
All right. Well, interesting answer. Mr. Lee.
I appreciate Mr. Sario's assessment of the volunteer force at LAPD because I am one of them. I've been working in this community and because public safety has always been one of my biggest concerns for this area. This is the area where I'm raising my children, and I think it's a simple fix. During the economic downturn, we eliminated civilian positions and put full sworn officers back into the stations doing the job that they can do. All we need to do is hire more civilians to fill in the positions that, that are at each station, clerical positions, positions up at front desk, to get our officers back on the streets. That's why I am the only candidate up here endorsed by law enforcement.
Ms. Lundquist.
I'd like to address the Eliso Canyon issue. There are still people in my community who are suffering as a result of this facility, and there has not been enough action from the city. The city needs to stand up and protect its citizens and protect the people of the North Valley from this, from this facility. There was just a seismic study that was released that found that this facility, every single one of those wells, sits on an active earthquake fault that bisects those wells. And the seismic study found that there's a decent chance of an earthquake that could literally, that could literally rupture 62 wells at, at once, right? The big blowout that we saw was just one well rupturing. And that is the reality that we are facing right now. Meanwhile, SoCal Gas has been, has had pipelines.
Well, your time's up anyway.
Thank you.
Eliso Canyon is the biggest, we got it. Thank you.
Give me one moment.
Still, all right, we got it.
I want to address the issue of the city not having authority to do certain things. This is a cop-out that we hear all the time. I didn't have the legal authority to get rid of the red light cameras here in Los Angeles, saving this, this people in the city over $200 million, but I got it done as an individual. I didn't have the authority, the legal authority, to get every traffic light in the state of California re-timed, so the yellow light time was appropriate, people didn't run red lights, but I got it done as an individual. I didn't have the legal authority to push through parking reform, but I got it done as an individual. I didn't have the legal authority to stop bills in Sacramento that would have taken away your right to a trial, but I got it done as an individual. I'm not taking credit for things that happened as, while I was a staffer somewhere, that somebody else did, okay? I got these things done because I had the interest in getting them done as an individual.
All right. Thank you, thank you. Sorry about that mic cutting out. All right, we're going to get to some audience questions in a minute. First, we're going to start with what we call lightning round. If each been provided with cards that say yes or no, and as you're getting those out, I'm going to ask the first question. Just hold up a yes or no, hold it up over your head, in front of your face, in front of you, whatever. Here we, and some of these are from the audience, too. All right, now, while you're getting together, the first question's about SB 50, which is a state bill that seeks to take away a lot of local control over zoning. Started out as a way to allow denser, taller housing around some types of transit and job-rich communities, and for those of you who don't know, it was amended last week and now would allow single-family houses to be converted to four-unit buildings by right anywhere in the state. Do you support SB 50? All right, so you all need, you all know how to use the no card. Very impressive, okay, good skills on the no card. There we go. Let's try number two, might be a little disagreement here. Do you think the city of LA should devote more resources to helping immigrants from foreign countries?
City of LA?
The city of LA. Should devote more resources, okay, so we got some ask, a lot of audience, you may look and talk about, you can ask follow-up during the meet and read after the forum. All right, would you, here we go, here's, here's a current events question. Would you support deploying on-duty LAPD officers to stand guard at all houses of worship during religious services, considering what's been happening?
The other thing was based on what's going on now. Repeat the question.
Because of what, the terrorist shootings at religious places, would you support deploying on-duty LAPD officers to stand guard at all houses of worship during religious services? If the, let's say if the house of worship, if the house of worship requests, if, no, if, on request. All right, all right, so that's, anyway, this is the question. All right, so not everybody's, you don't have to answer. All right, so, okay, if you don't, you don't have to answer every question, but that was, that's just a, that's just a thought. I saw some people willing to deploy, I saw some not, I saw some, I saw some non-answers. Let's move along. Are you in favor of Measure EE, the local education parcel tax? The local, Measure EE, the local education parcel tax coming up on the ballot, are you in favor? And here's a mix, so everybody please take note, and again, you can follow up with the individual candidates. All right, here's one from the audience. With all the new residential and commercial development resulting in congestion on Rinaldi Street, plus the threat of fires and earthquakes, isn't it time to connect the Porter Ranch and Granada Hills segments of Ceznon Boulevard to a bridge over Eliso Canyon? Well, just, just yes or no? Is it, is it time, no, I don't want, I just want to say yes or no? Yes or no, yes or no, or don't answer? Connect the, the built-up bridge over Eliso Canyon.
Pays for it.
Okay, this would be obviously part of the city expense.
I pay a lot of taxes.
That one came from the audience. That one came from the audience, thank you. All right, here we go. There's a bill known as the 4:00 AM bar bill, SB 58. Are you in favor of letting LA bar, wall bars stay open till 4:00 AM? Oh, we got a lot of consensus on that. Okay. All right, let me ask one, one, one question from the moderator.
We're attacking the vote.
There you go. Now, I'm an air quality public health guy, but I've got quite.
These are fine questions, but they're impossible to answer.
Some of them, here's, here's one you can easily answer yes or no. Here's one you can easily, here's, here's one you can easily answer yes or no. Do you drive a hydrogen fuel cell or a plug-in car?
I don't have a car.
You don't have a car, well, you don't drive one. Okay, all right, there we go. We have a couple, couple.
Leadership, they want to raise your car, why can't I share it?
Couple, all right, there we go. Those are the yes or no questions. Now we're going to move on to some other questions from the audience. I've got enough for one round of three questions, and we're going to ask again, like we're doing before, one question of each group to keep things interesting, and then at the end, you can have another opportunity to answer a question that was not asked to you directly. All right, so what we have here, question from group C, 30 seconds, group C, again, sorry, going to this show. What would you do to address the sidewalk issues as well as maintaining the street trees? That's a, that's a good question.
It's interesting that you should ask that. Annie Cho, I've been door-knocking since the middle of January, and when I was door-knocking in Chatsworth in one of the streets, uneven sidewalks, I tripped and I fell, and I've got several scars. And I'm a relatively healthy young woman. Can you imagine someone who is perhaps older, more frail, walking on the streets and falling? So we must get our sidewalks fixed, and we must make sure that our trees are, we must make sure that our trees are trimmed. Mr. Galperin recently issued a report saying that we used to trim our trees every five years, now we're trimming them every 10, 15 years.
So there you go. There's some personal experience to bring to the question. All right, thank you. Mr. Dar.
Yeah, hi, Jeff Dar. So sidewalks, it's a accessibility issue, first of all. People cannot get by on our sidewalks. They're putting aside being able to walk if you're in a wheelchair or some other type of limited access and mobility, forget it. It's a lot cheaper to fix them, and we just need to make the investment that is to defend lawsuits, which is what we're doing right now. And when it comes to our trees, we need to sit here and not only take care of our trees, which we're finally starting to do, we need to grow our canopy of trees. It's the one thing that makes the open spaces and our streets livable and pleasurable, and we're so behind on planting and replacing trees.
There you go. Thank you. Now, Mr. Yager, on the sidewalks and trees.
Yeah, you can't fix the sidewalks until you get the people living on them off of them, so addressing the homelessness crisis is step one. Then, as we reinvest in our infrastructure, repaving and rebuilding the sidewalks, and looking at trees that don't have root structures that spread out but instead go down is a good start. You know, I think maybe spending, like my opponent Jeff said, you know, not spending money on settlements and trying to fix the problem that we were not, you know, increasing our settlement payouts, we can use that money to reinvest in our infrastructure as well.
All right, thank you. Ms. Malloy.
Sidewalk issues need to be fixed and maintained. I feel it's a safety issue, it's an accessibility issue, it's an investment issue, and I think we personally, private citizens, have a responsibility to take pictures and report them and be at it because it's not going to be fixed by itself. Thank you.
All right, thank you, group C. Let's move to group B, and while they're answering this, could the question orders please bring me another round of three questions? I think we'll have time for it. All right. All right, group B, that's starting, yes, with Mr. Ferry. How will you ensure the spending $25 million Eliso Canyon health study be community-driven and absent political or Southern California gas agendas?
Well, it's ridiculous. More money went to Central Valley to capture cow farts than the people that were hurt here in Porter Ranch. The people that lost our trust, the people that... The people that lost our trust, the people that caused the problem should not be the people in control of regaining our public trust. The people that live in this community should be the ones that decide how public trust is brought back into our community.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Robb.
Raji Robb, this is a very, very, very serious matter. I've spoken to about hundreds and hundreds of people who live around Eliso Canyon, they have suffered and they are so disappointed with the outcome, they feel they're be let down by the politicians, by the administration, by everybody else, because the decision that's come out is completely out of line from what they were expecting as a relief. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, turn to Ms. Ramador.
I believe that we need to continue to engage with the County Department of Health Services as well as with the city agencies, and making sure that the appropriate community leaders are taking a position on the community advisory board, to make sure that they are represented, whether it's from the neighborhood councils, which some have been appointed, but also making sure that the community leaders that were involved in the efforts to push back against SoCal Gas and making sure that it's shut down, they are also part of that community advisory board.
All right, Mr. Abrams on the health study.
Yeah, I would take the opposite approach, actually. I don't really trust the County Department of Health on this. They lost our trust on this. You know, they told us that the air was fine, that there was no petroleum, that the firefighters could go in. Now firefighters are suing because they're sick. And constantly, we were told that there was no big deal, it was just more captain, it was just the smell. There was a lot more to it than that, and I want to see it in the hands of people who I trust and who the community trusts, and not in the people who were misleading us all the way through.
All right, thank you, Group B. Now, we have time for questions from Group, to Group A. It's a pretty straightforward question, also about Eliso Canyon, because the audience is interested in that, and I can understand why. But the question actually is, if we close Eliso Canyon, what is going to replace it to supply LA with gas?
Okay, well, this is obviously a very difficult question, because if you close down the facility, you could end up, you could end up adding to a lot of the gas prices. So, when the facility gets finally closed down, which is what I support, we have to make sure that the rate payers are not taking the hit on this. And that's the first and foremost thing. So, shut it down, make sure that the rate payers are not, not taking the hit on this. And so, we may have to find other sources, either storage sources elsewhere where there's nobody living, or, or other sources of power. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Langquist.
Since the Eliso Canyon blowout nearly three and a half years ago, the facility has not been used except for a few times. And if you look at the times when that facility has been used, it's almost always because SoCal Gas has been manipulating things to make it appear that it needs to be used. So, for example, they have three pipelines down for maintenance right now that have been done, down for an incredibly, very unusually long time, and the natural gas prices have been fluctuating dramatically as a result. It started, they started right when the pipelines were taken down for maintenance. We do not need the facility right now, we can close it down right now.
Well, to answer the question, I mean, we'd have, we'd have to accelerate our wind and solar program, but really, I mean, in the real life, reality of right now, what we should be doing, is Governor Brown's put a 10-year mandate on closing this facility. It's not a 10-year plan, it's just a 10-year mandate. Now, two years have gone by where nothing has happened, and we need to go up to Sacramento, hold the PUC, Dogger, all the, all the, all the boards that have any oversight over this committee, and hold their feet to the fire to make sure that this plan gets done.
All right, Mr. Sariel.
I think Supervisor Barker fought her butt off in this Eliso Canyon disaster. We can't shut it down right away, because then the gas prices and energy prices for everyone in this room will go up, like you see all over with the gas prices at the gas stations right now. But I am for having a free market approach, where we invite green energy to come back to California, and we make this an economic disaster area where we can have more competition in order to build more wind power and everything else. Thank you.
All right, yeah, thanks very much. All right, let's do one more round of audience questions. We'll start with Group B. Mr. Ferry, let's see which one to start with here. These are from the audience. One is about signage, large signage, and what you think about large signage.
That's William's question, where's William?
And, do you think, you know, nearby property owners should consent, and what sorts of measures would you take to control such things?
Everyone's looking at me. I guess I've never had big signs here in the valley, no. We actually have a company that comes out, I told William, who I know whose question that is, oh, who's talking about illegally placed? Are you kidding me? Signs are going out there, and I totally, I'm going to take responsibility. Those that were put up, I don't even know where all my signs are, based on where the company put them. I said, I'll take responsibility. The ones that I have taken down, unfortunately, the ones that I had property ownership or consent from, I've had more than half my signs taken down and shredded by someone that's going out at 3:00, 4:00, 5:00 in the morning. So, to get me to say one way or the other, I'm not in a place. Based on the last three nights.
I don't think we're just talking about campaign signs, but maybe. Raji Robb, what do you think?
Raji Robb, I'd like to talk about.
Shh.
Okay, that time doesn't count.
Correct.
So, there's a law between campaign signs, political campaign signs, and commercial signs. Let me tell everyone about this. There's a law, 14.4.4, please look it up. It is very clear about political signs, it gives you an opportunity to put the sign, but it also asks you to remove them within 10 days. So, there's no restriction on things, the law is open. I had somebody come down to my home and start shouting and yelling a few days ago, when I was in home, after 5:00, but that's not good. We are following the law. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Ramador on signs, political, commercial, what happened?
I believe that in order for our communities to look beautiful and welcoming, we need to make sure that we do have limited signage, whether it's political or commercial, to make sure that our communities stay, stay as, you know, welcoming and horny as possible. So, there should be consent from businesses or homeowners whenever a sign is put up, political or not.
All right, thank you. Mr. Abrams.
I want to start by saying that I would oppose the digital ads that are going up on cars, that's going to be including our communities, our digital.
Is my mic on? Where's the switch going? What's going on?
Do you send a battery?
Dead battery, maybe? How about the old-fashioned kind? Here we go.
I'll just be, fuck. Yeah. So, first of all, I do have concerns about the digital ads that are going up on cars, that's one thing. But the other thing on signage that I want to mention is the proliferation of ads for cannabis. I want to work with our city attorney to make sure that we get some disclosures on that disclaimer, because we have the big disclaimers on tobacco ads, like you're advertising cookies in neighborhoods that are, you know, advertising to kids, and there's no notion that this is a product that is not safe for, for kids. So, although voters voted to have cannabis, I think we should be talking about proper disclaimer on cannabis signs.
All right, so now we're going to move back to Group A for another question. Generally, this question's about parcel tax. What do you think the maximum should be for a parcel to be taxed? And whether you think parcel taxes are unacceptably raising the cost of housing in LA? What do you think about parcel, the parcel taxes so far or the parcel taxes to come?
You kind of answered the question for me, but thank you. Yeah, I mean, this is the problem. We complain about the fact that housing is so expensive, whether it's, whether it's single-family housing or multiple-family housing, apartment housing, and yet, the government continually looks to us to add to the cost of that by putting on parcel taxes. They want, they look at us as an ATM, and they, and they don't realize that that gets passed down to everybody. When people want to move here, it's more expensive. I'm totally against this, because first of all, the, first of all, they need to get their financial house in order before they add any more taxes.
Ms. Langquist.
Well, the parcel tax that's being considered for this election is an investment in our schools, and I believe that investment in public education is the very best way that we can possibly spend our public funds. It's good for business, it's good for society.
Please calm down.
I do own property, and I am so happy to pay that, that parcel tax for our public schools. It's, it is, we need to invest in our public schools, we need to invest in our children, and, and, you know, the voters will ultimately get to decide on this issue, and I think that's appropriate.
Thank you. Mr. Lee.
I don't think there's a person in this room that doesn't support schools. Up here on the stage, no one has supported the PTAs in this district more than I through fundraising efforts. But it's extremely cynical of this superintendent to prey on the, the suffering of teachers and the empathy that of parents we had when we see our kids in classrooms, in oversized classrooms. Until LAUSD comes out with any type of reform, I am not going to give them another penny. If, unless, if we, if we believe, if I believe that every cent was going to get to the classrooms, I may consider it, but you know what? I know it's not.
Ms., no applause, please, thank you, we're almost to the end. Mr. Sariel.
I'm a product of the LAUSD system, and everyone in this room already pays a high sales tax. Everyone in this room already pays a high gas tax. I'm against another raise on taxes for homeowners. My aunt, who has lived here since 1961, just moved to Florida because she could no longer afford it. My cousin, who just moved his business to Florida as well, because he could no longer afford to live in California. And now my mom is thinking about leaving California, and she was born here in 1955. I'm sick and tired of the taxes, not one more dime, until they start auditing every single department in this government.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, very good. There's one more group to go to for an audience question, and then you'll have, you'll have the opportunity to answer a question that was not asked directly to you. So, we're going to Group C, Ms. Cho, Annie Cho, here we, here we go. This is a question, the audience person put in a question, put in a figure of $10 billion of bonds. I'm not sure if this is true, but there have been a lot of bonds and revenue raised already for homelessness, for addressing the problem of homelessness. The question goes to the causes, I guess, so please tell me why you think there are more homeless in Los Angeles now than before that revenue started getting raised.
So, Lister JJJ was passed, and we are not seeing any indication of how that is being spent in CD 12. HHH was just recently passed, and we have no idea what is happening.
Yeah, exactly.
And so, we, we need to find out. Where are those funds going? And how come CD 12 is not getting any? How can we tackle homelessness without the funds that are due us? So, I want to, I demand transparency, and without transparency, we cannot have accountability.
All right, Mr. Dohr.
Yes, hi, Jeff Dohr. If I understand the question correctly, it's how we can deal with root causes.
Oh, yeah, what are, what do you think the causes are?
I mean, fundamental stuff. We've got to keep our citizens from losing their homes or even having homes in the first place, so we need to provide childcare, so that women and men who are trying to educate themselves can. We fail in that tremendously. The parks only offer two programs, they're extremely limited. We need to have actual affordable housing. We need to sit here and make sure that the renters in this city can afford to live in their units, and if they are displaced, they should get first in line for the affordable housing we're trying to build, rather than just being on the streets.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Yeager, seems like there's a lot of money already being addressed, addressing the problem, why is it getting worse?
Yeah, well, I would like to address the cost of living. It's very expensive to live in the city of Los Angeles and the county of Los Angeles, but I think it stems from economic opportunity. I am proud to stand up here and say that I have an economic plan to bring jobs to the district. We have the largest industrial zone in the city, really, high vacancy rates, bringing life science and biotech to this industry, where in the 90s, we had a booming aerospace industry, supported a million career jobs, now supports about half a million part-time jobs. Let's modernize, let's move into the future. Those will support all the way from the scientists, all the way to the custodian level, that will afford people the opportunity to live in this great city.
Thank you. Ms. Malloy.
Look, folks, we all have voted, the money has been earmarked, millions of dollars. So, now it's the government's role to ensure that these housings are built. The reason we have this chronic problem, chronic crisis, is because folks are losing their homes, folks are losing their jobs, they're three paychecks away from their jobs. We have a working homeless community that live out of their cars. These are not lazy people, these are people down on their luck, and we have to now.
All right, thank you. Lot of thought about the economy in those answers. Now, that's the end of the questions from the audience, it's the questions from me, but I did promise everybody another chance, 45 seconds each, to address a question you weren't asked but would like to answer. I'm going to make Mr. Bieber go first this time.
This is not the closing.
This is not the closing. We know that Mr. Bieber's going to bat last in the closing, so I have no problem with him going first. So, here we go, Mr. Bieber, go ahead.
I want to, I want to address the question about traffic and transit. The first thing is that the city has a boneheaded plan to get you out of your car by making driving as miserable as possible, thinking that if they make it bad enough, you won't have a car and you won't drive anywhere. There are certain things that can be done to alleviate traffic, but these are not the way, the ways to do it. One thing that we could have done, and we could have had transit through the Sepulveda Pass right now if they had listened to what we had said, which was, when they rebuilt the 405 and tore down all the bridges, they should have put in a dedicated bus lane down the 405 that could have been converted to light rail later, later on. But they didn't do it because they didn't plan, and that's, and that's, that's a huge problem. The other thing is, we need to do more with telecommuting and have the city lead on that, and make sure that there are, if there are people who, who can work at home and, and be monitored that way, that they, that we stagger that, and that way, we get less people going to work every day.
All right, oh, thank you. Ms. Langquist.
I also would like to address the question on transportation and transit. We need to accelerate the plans for transit, additional transit in, in the valley, the North Valley Rapid Transit Line, the rail through the Sepulveda Pass, but in particular, I would like to see new and creative ideas to how to reduce traffic and increase ridership on, on new kinds of transport, transit and transportation. So, for example, in one of the council districts, they piloted the LA Now Shuttle, which is kind of like a cross between Uber and Lyft and public transit. It's on-demand shuttle, so that you can call the transit shuttle, and it will pick you up where you are, and it will take you to where you're going, and pick people up on the way in between. This is a public kind of system that would work great, for example, around CSUN, where we have many students.
Okay, thank you.
I addressed a question about the cause of homelessness. Look, it's a basic economic problem. We have demand, we have no supply. We're pushing the middle class, they're paying over 50% of their income for housing costs. I mean, this is just not sustainable. We, we need, we need to start looking at the different plans and the fees that we put on these apartment owners that are supposed to solve housing, but all they're doing, they're being passed through by the owners to the renters and driving up prices. Look, and also, there, there's no coincidence that as a rise of the opioid crisis, we've had an increase in the homeless population. They've made billions and billions of dollars off of us, we should be going after them.
All right, well, I've got no applause yet. Mr. Sariel.
Again, in 2017, I decided to get involved in politics, because I just got fed up with what's going on. There, there's no transit system that will allow me to take Granada Hills to Culver City to work in the entertainment business, or when I work downtown, or when I work to Chatsworth, or when I work, wherever I work. The cost of living is too high, and for decades, and I'm saying decades, the politicians, the lobbyists, the same people that have been elected, have forgotten what they're supposed to do. I'm, I'm tired of it. I've been here since 19, my grand, my family's been here since 1961. I was born here in 1979. I'm not putting up with this anymore. I'm, I'm sick and tired of the excuses, of the lies, and we need to, to lower taxes, and we need to figure things out and come together as communities rather than.
There you go, thank you.
Ethics in Los Angeles has been lowered so low that none of us in, in the room here no longer are shocked or disgusted by the things we see. So, when the FBI raids on a pay-to-play developer issue, we just don't even blink. In this race specifically, we had a president of the Ethics Commission resign to run, even though the law specifically said you had to wait two years after you left office. I challenged Ethics Commission, they said, she told me, the law doesn't apply to me. No one said a word. I go to the city attorney, city attorney's silent. I had to spend over $15,000 of my money and my wife's money to challenge for a judge to say, you're right on all 12 accounts. So, she was taken off the ballot. But that's what it's become. We do nothing, and we allow bad behavior because our own government and city attorney will. will do nothing.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
When we talk about Rajiv Rab again, when we talk about ethics, we talk about election integrity, we talk about why we are here today, we talk about transparency, we talk about clarity. Uh, I just ran for office a few months ago for US Congress, and, uh, you know, I, I faced tremendous, tremendous violations of law, ethics, practices, you can't imagine. I went from court to court to court personally to US Supreme Court, and you can imagine what would've driven me to do that. So basically, that is one of the reasons that I'm running for office, to get in and clear up the mess. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next up, Mr. Amador. Does that reach? How about the other one there or something? I tell you, there we go. Move Jason Hector. There you go. Hey, all right, you changed name, check. See if it changes names. Shake that, shake that microphone, see if it still works.
Check, check.
That works.
Thank you. Um, one of the questions that wasn't asked, that I wish it was asked and we were able to engage is, making sure that we have protections against workplace discrimination. Uh, one of the priorities that I wanna champion when I get to City Hall is making sure that we have, we create an economy that works for everyone. Uh, just recently, I was helping and supporting the efforts to pass the Civil and Human Rights Ordinance in the city, a landmark, uh, ordinance that was passed just a few weeks ago. But I wanna make sure that when I get to City Hall, we have the necessary resources to enforce, uh, anti-discrimination, um, laws that are at state level, at the local level, and making sure that we have the necessary resources to educate the community, whether it's, uh, you know, women, young folks, black, uh, community members, immigrants, uh, everyone, making sure that they have, uh, they know how to defend themselves in the workplace.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Abrams?
Yeah, on, on housing, I wanna go back to SB 50 for a second because that could affect our community more than anything else we're talking about. You know what? In Sacramento, they're deciding whether to upzone our communities here, and I strongly oppose it. You know, the LA Times said that Northridge would be most affected by this decision. We need to be paying attention to what's going on in Sacramento, and they're gonna take away our say and the neighborhood councils' say on what happens in our communities. In fact, they're moving the ball. It used to be that, well, if you were close to transit, that there could be more housing. Makes sense, but now they've shifted it, and now it's quote-unquote "job-rich" communities. That's all of CD-12, by the way, if you look at the map, or nearly all of it. West Hills, Northridge, Chatsworth, they're, it's all considered job-rich to Sacramento. And that's gonna change the character of our communities, and I think we need to fight for our local input.
All right, thank you. N H O, N H O, you're up.
Thank you. I wanna talk about homelessness and affordable housing. Um, I think there's something fundamentally wrong when people who have a good, full-time paid jobs are not able to have a place of their own. Um, for example, uh, my son, who is twenty-eight years old, he works at a high school as a physics teacher. He has a little bit of student loans, and he is not able to live on his own, so he moved in with, um, me and my husband. Well, he's lucky that my husband and I are here in the, in the area. How about all those other people who have good-paying jobs, working full-time, and that, and are not able to, uh, find a place of their own? We are looking at future homeless populations that are much closer to us than we think. I've been door-knocking, and I've heard of so many families who have adult children moving back in, and now they're taking on their grandchildren.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Uh, Jeff Dar, any question?
Yes, Jeff Dar. I'm gonna answer the question about the closure of Eliso Canyon. Uh, there are studies that show that we do not need Eliso Canyon at this moment. It is not being utilized. We need to close it now, and we need to sit here and not wait eight years, which will probably end up being ten or twelve for the rest of our lives. We cannot afford to have, again, our community, our children, people at this school, people down the street at Porter Ranch. We cannot have people vomiting, nosebleeds, we cannot afford that. And we're talking about a time bomb waiting to happen because we have a plant, uh, we have the storage facility in the middle of fire zone and on earthquake faults. If you balance things, we gotta close it, and the thing that you haven't heard, we need to remediate it, so our children will actually have some open spaces that one day they can actually utilize. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Yager?
Thank you. I'd like to address parcel taxes. Uh, Prop 13 is law of the land. Uh, I'm not a proponent of increasing barriers to homeownership. I think looking at what the Realtors Association looked for Prop 5 and finding ways to transition seniors who were in their homes, in large homes, when they downsized, being able to transition, uh, their property tax rate is a way of increasing and bringing larger homes onto the market, uh, for up-and-coming families or growing families. Uh, I believe split roll is just the beginning of the entire repeal of Prop 13. Uh, so I am adamantly against, uh, any attempt at increasing barriers to homeownership through parcel taxes.
Ms. Malloy, you get the last chance to answer a question you were not asked directly.
Affordable housing, homelessness is our major crisis, not only in our district, in our city, in our country, in particular in California. I am a fan of development, as long as it's done correctly, as long as it creates good green jobs with prevailing wages. So I feel there are opportunities for developers to do the right thing, to build affordable housing, and less luxury housing, more affordable housing, and the city needs to give these developers incentives so it can be win-win for all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all candidates. Um, we're gonna go to closing statements now. And as you know, and the audience may not know, we did a, one of the League of Women Voters' famous lotteries, where everybody picked a number to, uh, find out what place they're in, or not what place they're in, what order they will give their closing statements in. So, um, I think I wrote them all down. Uh, Mr. Sario, did you get number ten?
Number two.
Oh, you got number two, okay. Very good. I knew there was one number that wasn't assigned, and that would be number ten then. All right, so it's going to be, uh, first Scott Abrams, and then Mr. Sario, and then we'll, uh, take it from there. Each candidate will have sixty seconds to give a closing statement, and I hope to make your best case to the voters here about why they should vote for you. Go right ahead, Mr. Abrams, you have sixty seconds.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Scott Abrams, and I have deep roots in this community. My parents met as undergrads at CSUN before it was called CSUN fifty years ago, and now my wife and I are raising our three children in West Hills. For the last seventeen years, I've been a senior aide to Congressman Brad Sherman, who represents most of CD-12, which means I've been steeped in the issues that have been affecting our community, whether it's Eliso Canyon, traffic, and all the other issues, including housing. So I've been, uh, working for results for valley residents. I've been running a constituent service office where over a thousand people a year, we resolve problems, because that's the first responsibility of a council member, is to get the job done and be proactive, be out in the community. You find me at the concerts in the park because I wanna bring government to your doorstep. I don't wanna wait for you to come to me, I wanna solve those problems for you. And finally, I bring the perspective of how the federal, state, and local government all work together, and we need those partnerships. When you talk about homelessness or environmental issues, we need federal dollars, like the cops hiring program, we need safer grants for our fire department, we need mental health assistance from the state, and we need local solutions, and I know all those levels of government. Thank you.
All right, please, thank you. Number two.
Hello, everyone. My name is Brandon Sario. Um, in 2017, like I said, I decided to run for state senate against Bob Herzberg because I just got sick and tired of what was going on in my district. Um, the gas prices are too high, energy prices are too high, and, um, my family is moving out of California because they can no longer afford it. Um, I, I, my, my mother and my, my stepfather, um, lost their jobs during the recession, so I moved in with them to help them support, to make sure they paid their mortgage, to make sure that they did not lose their house. And in the neighborhood I grew up in, in, um, we have RVs coming up and down the street. And, um, I have little girls, uh, on each side of my house, um, and I have a golden retriever, and I walk my golden retriever every single day. And, um, the other day, there was a broken crack pipe in my neighborhood that I grew up in, and I'm sick and tired of it, I'm sick and tired of the excuses being made by politicians, by lobbyists. I'm endorsed by Howard Jarvis Tax Payers Association because I will not raise your taxes.
And, there you go. I don't think you got the finish of this. Thank you, Mr. Sario, that's your time. All right, thank you, though. Um, so number three is N H O, and number four is Jeff Dar. This is Cho.
I came to San Fernando Valley when I got married. I lived in North Hills for the first five years, and we moved to Porter Ranch to send our kids to Castle Bay. We have been here for thirty years, raised our children, I have a business here. I have a deeply vested interest in making sure that our community continues to be a beautiful place where we can raise our children, a wonderful place where people can work and thrive. I wanna make sure that we have transparency and accountability in the newly-elected council person. I am running to see change. I am running to make sure that we, our new council person, can work more effectively with the other council, council members, as well as county, state, and federal elected officials. I have worked for US Senator Allen Cranston, I've worked for Assembly Speaker Pro Tem Mike Rusev. I've also served on the Los Angeles Water and Power Board. I'm the only one of all the candidates who has, who has diverse work, government work experience, and I bring to you a wealth of life experience, having, having taken care of childcare and elder care simultaneously. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, number four, Jeff Dar, and then five would be Rajiv Rab.
And, and thanks, everyone here, for putting up with all of us, by the way. Um, so I've been, for the last three and a half years, one of the airport commissioners overseeing LAAX, which frankly has not been a great airport. And we've been able to, and I've been a key part of it, of transforming what is something that has not been that good into what is now becoming one of the great airports in the world. It will soon become one of the beacons of the city, and we're doing it in the most innovative ways. We have almost fifteen billion dollars of ongoing modernization projects, but of tax dollars, in the black, on time. How refreshing is that for city government? I wanna take that same spirit of innovation and sustainability and use it to deal with our homelessness, our transportation, our sidewalk, our streets, our quality of life, and as your council member, I wanna transform how we do things. I wanna change the culture of bureaucracy, so the city will finally function like it should, instead of being bloated and everything taking so long, and small, medium businesses paying the price of having a hard time creating good-paying jobs for all of us.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. All right, Rajiv Rab, and number six.
My name is Rajiv Rab, and, uh, like I said a few minutes ago, when I believe in something, I fight for it. And in the previous election, I came across a barrage of violations of law, and for that reason, I fought all the way to US Supreme Court. I'm an aviator, an educator, I'm among common people, I do volunteer work, I do charities around the year, I've worked with the LBD on various volunteer efforts. Uh, my son, like I said, is a doctor, he's a, he works for the Department of Mental Health, uh, he's a psychiatrist. My daughter works with the Department of Mental Health, also, uh, providing, uh, housing for the homeless. Homelessness is a big issue. Uh, I'm a family of givers, mental health is a main issue connected with the homelessness, and I can, uh, offer more than everybody else on this table. I believe that, uh, I stand on merit, I care, I can, and I will serve you better. Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Rab. Uh, John Lee, followed by Joshua Yager.
I've lived in this community since 1978. I was, uh, raised, uh, right near temperature downs. I started volunteering when I was thirteen years old, and that's why I think that both Democrats and Republicans have endorsed me, because they believe I'm a community person. My stance on homelessness is why Wade Trimmer, the Executive Director of Housing and Homeless Services of National Health Foundation, has endorsed my campaign. My stance, uh, towards helping small businesses is why the Business Federation has endorsed my campaign. My stance on crime and helping bring this district to be the safest district in the city of Los Angeles is why I'm the only candidate endorsed by law enforcement. Over seventy thousand law enforcement officers through the state have endorsed my campaign. Again, my name is John Lee, and I hope by June 4th, I can earn your support.
All right, Josh Yager?
Thank you. Uh, my name is Josh Yager, I wanna thank you all again, uh, for the invitation for myself to participate, uh, in this great forum. Uh, I'll be the first to tell you, I'm not the most conventional candidate. I am a product of this district, born and raised here, grew up in Granada Hills, attended local schools, and I've lived many of the same issues that you have lived, probably even was in some of the same classrooms as some of your kids were, uh, way back when. Uh, but as I've walked the district and as I've engaged with voters, you know, since middle of January, um, the one thing I've been doing is listening. I've been in, listening to everyone at their door and having them tell me what their issues are, what their priorities are, their vision for our community. Uh, and as your councilman, that's what I'm promising. I'm promising a partnership in government regardless of your status in the community, whether you're a community leader or just, uh, an average resident living, uh, amongst our borders. Um, that is what I promised to you, and is, uh, why I have decided to run, um, and I hope to, to get your guys' support between now and June 4th, so thank you again.
Thank you. We're gonna go, number eight is Stella Malloy, right next to you there. All right.
Stella Malloy. I'm an Armenian-American immigrant that moved to Los Angeles to District 12 at age fifteen. I've gone to school, to Cal State Northridge, every decade to study something new. My son is a graduate of Cal State Northridge. I have created many community projects within San Fernando Valley, and I have been an executive almost for two decades in one of the region's most strategic organizations in the country named LAIN, L.A. Alliance for a New Economy. We have a lot of fine people on this panel, but please do your research. I'm the candidate that has actively shaped policy and helped pass comprehensive campaigns lifting hundreds and thousands of people out of poverty. I have also created the largest private fundraising program for a nonprofit sector in the country, due to my skills in bringing business, labor, entertainment, and community to one another. I do hope I will earn your support. Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Now, Frank Ferry is number nine, and there is no number ten, but number eleven will be Carlos Amador.
Uh, my first twenty-five years, I lived in Granada Hills at the corner of Ranali and Shoshone, in the bunkhouse of which used to be the Sunshine Ranch. Went to Albany High School, went to Cal State Northridge. I was blessed to be the principal of Bishop Albany High School for eight years, where I served the families there and was very successful in increasing the academics, the enrollment, and student pride. I began teaching at Nobel Middle School, where I was Teacher of the Year, recognized by the PTSA of the Thirty-First District. I went in to get a crown, and they sent out a new dentist. I ended up marrying my new dentist, and I moved back to West Hills five years ago, uh, and have enjoyed being back in CD-12 for a total now of thirty years. Uh, my mom and dad live here, my sons live here. Sixteen years of elected service in the city of Santa Clarita, one of the top cities in California, if not the nation. I really would like for you to go and see all the accomplishments we've had, when it comes to road, transit, trails, openings, parks, libraries, etc.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Ferry. All right, again, number six, skipping ten, going to Carlos Amador, number eleven, and the last two will be Ms. Lundquist and Mr. Bieber.
Thank you. Uh, Carlos Amador, once again, thank you so much for, uh, hearing my vision, my commitment for the district. I live in Granada Hills with my wife and my five-year-old daughter. I didn't have the privilege to, growing up in the district, but my wife and I chose this community and this home to give that opportunity to my daughter. I, I'm a trained social worker, graduated from UCLA, and I have led campaigns at the local, and the state, and the federal level to change the lives of millions of people in, in this country. So I wanna make sure that I bring those tools and those skills with me to everything I do at City Hall, whether it's tackling the corruption, homelessness issues, the environment and the economy, among other things. I will, I know how to do this, uh, this job, I know how to make changes, and I will make sure that, that I am addressing that. So I, I will go to City Hall and create a city government that my daughter can still believe in, even as she learns to appreciate what we're up against. So I hope to come with your support. You can visit CarlosForLA.com, uh, to learn more about myself and my campaign. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos ForLA. All right, quickly, before we go to the last two, I just wanna offer an apology to the audience. We're going about fifteen minutes longer than I had anticipated. Uh, uh, thank you all for continuing to be here and, uh, listen to these candidates. Uh, Ms. Lundquist.
Thank you all so much for, um, again, my name is Dr. Lorraine Lundquist. Um, the people in my district are looking for something different. We are looking for a new person to represent us.
We don't want the same old people who have been hanging around the halls of power, propping up the status quo and the corruption that we know exists in City Hall. People are looking for someone who will make them believe in local government again, who will inspire them and make them feel like their voice is being heard. People are responding to my candidacy partly because of the unique background that I bring to this race. They are responding to the fact that I am a scientist, an astrophysicist, someone who teaches at CSUN, a Neighborhood Council Vice President, a foster parent, someone who's designed and built a solar-powered car and launched a satellite into space, someone who's a public school mom who shows up to fight for her community, whether it's on homelessness, on Aliso Canyon, for education issues, or for all the, all the wonderful things that we all care about, about our community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lundquist, and now, as promised, Mr. Bieber to close it up.
Many of, okay, many of us have come here, whether it's us or our families, to pursue the California dream, and unfortunately, that dream is being destroyed, and our problems are self-imposed because of the people that we keep electing over and over and over again, whether it's a staffer, a former staffer, a board member, people that are endorsed by all the insiders, endorsed by all the special interests. If you want something different, you have to, you have to elect somebody different. And the reason that I am running is because we need a voice in City Hall. We need somebody who is going to be different, who is going to speak for the people. When I, when I get elected, I'm not going to City Hall, we're going to City Hall. That is my promise to you. My name is Jay Bieber. My website is JForLA.com, and I would be honored to have your vote on June 4th. Thank you very much.
All right, also a big round of applause for all the candidates now. Thank you all, thank you all, thank you for the Rashid and the council, and all the volunteers, and please remember to actually vote in the election, the election day is June 4th. Thank you.